For Monday, October 26th to order. You can Clifford, you've been nicely have to say your prayer with me.
Please stand. Heavenly Father, thank you for the life that we have. Thank you for our country where we have the opportunity to be the James Island Fellow of Service District. May we keep the interests of our citizens, our customers, and our James Island people in mind in all of our decisions tonight. Help us act civilly and to treat others as we would like to be treated. Please guide us safely home from this meeting, and thank you again for the gift of this country. Amen.
Amen.
My pleasure to lead this to the fire of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united one, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's find a few more please.
Freedom of Information Act, in compliance with the Freedom of Information Act. Notice of this meeting and agenda will require to all news media and persons to press your notifications. Commissioner Brown Crouch?
Yeah.
Commissioner Clifford?
Here.
Commissioner Engelmann?
Here.
Commissioner Loughlin?
Here.
Commissioner Platt?
Here.
Commissioner Poston?
Here.
Commissioner Woolsey?
Here.
Thank you, we have a quorum. We're gonna start off with something that I kinda like the idea of, is that an award. For those of you who have not heard about it, September 30th, Mr. Wise will be retiring.
What?
September 30th. And we will be doing, we are in the process trying to fill his shoes, but I can't find anybody who wears a size 23 yet. So, we do have an award for him tonight. Do you wanna get it back there, do you wanna do it up front, or?
Right here.
Right here, alright, can we please stand? He's been around since God was a baby, which is 1999. And we have an award for him. Twenty years of service at James Island PSD presented to Robert K. Wise, the General. I grateful appreciation for your loyal and dedicated services to JIPSD Commission and Organization. Presented this 26th day of August, 2019.
Our summary of speech, it will be very brief, but it will be only about one topic and that. The reason, I've been here for 20 years, and the reason I believe that we have one of the best SPDs in the state is the people that work here, these socialists. I've not been, had the privilege in 24 years of being a contributor coming here to have the same type of quality of people and dedication to the service of others. And it's good to feel like a public servant sometimes, even though a lot of times you get dumped on, they say. But truly, it's the staff, they've done a tremendous job. Bunch of good people, bunch of good people, and then this wouldn't have happened if they hadn't. And thank you for this. So, thank you very much, appreciate it.
Did he get to run the rest of the meeting?
Well, I was about to say, don't I get to leave now?
No. Okay, other part of this is commissioning. You wanna come back without?
No call.
A family party, very good. Okay, next thing is, Spike, do we have any people to sign up?
Yes, we do.
Alright. Everybody will be invited to speak, who has signed up, they'll have three minutes. If I can get this thing working, everybody will be able to see where he's standing as far as I'm concerned.
Yes, Bill Woolsey?
Good evening, everyone. So pleased to speak for you, and so glad to see on the agenda you have the motion to approve the, an ordinance on cost sharing with the town of James Island. It's something that we've been working on a lot in the last year, and I would just urge you, please vote for the cost sharing agreement. Now, the town passed on second reading a cost sharing agreement that included some changes that we received in the district that very day. However, the version that you have before you is somewhat different. Section nine has been changed. Now, my preference, partly for convenience, is that you approve the version that we approved. However, the changes in section nine are, in my opinion, something that I think council will agree to. So, it's, they're not a heel breaker all for us. I just think that the original version was just fine, and would rather go for that. There's two other things I would like to speak, but please, now we're coming up on the deadline to the auditor to get these tax credits on bills in October. And so, it's really essential that you please act tonight and pass a cost sharing agreement to town. The second thing I would like to speak to involves the discussion last month about moving the facility here at Single Point Road to your property at Dills Bluff Road. As I mentioned before, that property is zoned, five acres of it is zoned residential, and about an acre is zoned commercial. That zoning is not consistent with many of the activities here at Single Point Road. It would require rezoning. If you are at the district, if the commissioners vote to seek a rezoning, we will certainly go through the procedure. But the end of the procedure is a vote by town council on the rezoning. And it's my judgment that there are no votes on town council to rezone the property to industrial that will allow many of your activities to move there. If on the other hand, you just wanna move administrative office buildings there, I think there are five votes on council to rezone the residential section to office residential, at least part of it to office residential. So, that's certainly possible. Right now, it is, because it's residential, if the district were to try to sell it to outsiders, it would be very, you know, basically people could put single-family homes on the bulk of the property, that one acre of businesses could go. Finally, I came to speak in favor of the experiment, the proposal to have the city pick up some garbage cans in one part of the district, of an area that's pretty far away from the rest, and then to have the district pick up an equal number of five states.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Miss White?
Lauren Gilatley?
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Lauren Gilatley, I'm a resident of White House Plantation, which is the neighborhood that abuts the Dills Bluff parcel that you are considering moving headquarters. And I wanted to urge you this evening, I certainly appreciate the good work of all the employees of the Public Service District, and imagine that they probably do need new facilities, but I don't think that site is an appropriate use for some of the industrial uses that are being considered to be moved there. So, please keep the residents in mind, I think it could be a good spot for some additional small local businesses like are already in that area. Thank you.
Ken Godwin?
Good evening, my name's Ken Godwin, I'm a 46-year resident of White House Plantation. This matter of moving the Public Service District came up several years ago. I presented a petition signed by numerous residents of White House Plantation. And I'm certain that at that time, the commission voted not to move to the Dills Bluff property. I don't think that the residents have changed their mind, and we stand, or I stand, opposed to your moving to Dills Bluff Road. Thank you.
Grover Ramsey?
Good evening, I'm Grover Ramsey, I'm a resident of White House Plantation also. I live at the corner of Frederick Marion Drive and White House Boulevard. That puts my house three houses from the back entrance of this property that you're talking about reliving came to. As Mr. Godwin said also, we were here two or three years ago. The folks in chair, some of you weren't there, they took that completely off the table, said it was buried, we would never hear any more about it. Now we're hearing more about it. Noise wise, traffic wise, we can hear the dumpster dumpsters at Camp Center back there now, three, four, five o'clock in the morning, loading and unloading, and I see when you move this whole section down there, it don't make good sense. Plus, you've got a nice facility here, it doesn't need work, but to me, from the landscaping part of it, it would be a lot less expensive to redo what you have here versus moving to a whole new location, it would have to be completely graded and all. As a resident, I'm a 50-year resident of White House Plantation, and it just doesn't, have small grandchildren that play in this area. I don't know if you can use White House Boulevard as a in and out exit of the place or not, but that's, there used to be a gate there that was taken down recently, and I don't know what the plans are as far as how you get in and out of your new location if you move there. Thank you.
Stephen Corbett?
Hey, how y'all doing? My name is Stephen Corbett, I've lived on this island 51 years, and y'all spoke about how, you know, everybody don't like Joe Riley, and they fight back and forth. Well, if they annex into the city, then let the trash be picked up by them, okay? And if we take over the trash, take it all over the whole island and take the tax base from them. What happened years ago was, city moved on in, took all the tax base, took the tax base from James Island. They couldn't move up bigger and bigger with only four stations. Lost a lot of taxes, which they do get tax money, but then, now we're gonna take over garbage pickup for them and not get compensated? That should not be happening. If we, if we want to do the traffic up, let it pick up, take the tax base back from them, and y'all still need to work on consolidating the tax for the fire service. When it consolidates 911 system, y'all lost a lot of money over the years of James Island going across, you know, putting out fires for the city of Charleston, which is a great thing, but lost a lot of money, you know? And nobody ever went over that and looked at it. I worked at St. John's Fire Department 25 years. The chief at that time, he sat there and pushed to consolidate 911 system. It didn't hurt St. John's, it hurt St. Andrews, it hurt James Island. St. Andrews got how many stations, four. James Island only got four. They don't have no more tax base and can't build up taxes because of all the annexation. And now we're gonna help them out with trash? That's just not right. And like you said, everybody's got a bad taste for Joe Riley, no, the taste is always there because we've done lost everything we have with taxes, you know, and that's what y'all need to consider. If we're gonna start picking your trash up and not get paid, then, you know, that's not right. And you will find a lot of James Island people feel the same way. You know, a lot of people that are moving here from out of state, they don't know. They don't know at all, because there are a lot of Yankees out there that moved in here and don't know what happened, you know?
Thank you.
So... So, my thing is, you know, y'all need to readdress it thoroughly about, you know, doing traffic pickup. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Daniel Eastman?
Um, Daniel Eastman, thank you for having me, Commissioners. I'm a resident of Lynnwood, been a resident my entire life. Most of my problems have been already said out loud here with traffic, et cetera, related to moving to the Dills Bluff location. I personally would like to see it not developed at all until something is done with the intersection. Dills Bluff in the North Shore area, any more traffic in that area seems to be cutting to on Fort Sumder, whichever road they use to get across to Harborview. Seems like a bad idea, the residents in that area, many of whom are landhead customers of mine, are sick of the traffic as is. There's only two ways in and out of that area, Dills Bluff, one is to come through the Camp Fort Johnson area, it's a disaster already. The other one is Dills Bluff to Harborview, it's an equal disaster. So, I would prefer to see no development at all until the infrastructure in that area, turn lanes, turning lights at that intersection, whatever it ends up being based on the recommendation of DOT. Until something's done, I think we probably should not build anything else at this point in that area. Thank you.
Carol, Carol Jackson?
Yes. Hi, I'm Carol Jackson. I live at 41061 Patterson Avenue in the Bayfront neighborhood. I have one of a few properties that are zoned in, or annexed into the city a long time ago. My next-door neighbor is a town, a James Island resident, up the block, we have two county, unincorporated homes. I, I am privileged to have been elected to represent my District 12 on the Charleston City Council. And I have been sort of the representative that has worked with our staff on the city side in addition to Ms. Woolsey and Ms. Poston on the PSD side, as we have tried to think strategically about how to make the most out of our residents' taxes and fees. And I, I'm a Yankee, I moved here, I'm from Northern Virginia, by way of, and Chicago is where I was born and raised, and even before that, in Nebraska, if you wanna know my lineage. So, I'm not a Southerner, but I think everyone that I grew up with appreciates tax savings for good purpose. And when I moved here and started, I mean, there were days when I didn't really know the trash routes, and I was chasing in my car down the road after the PSD, you know, yard waste collectors, because I had a pile of yard waste that my husband had just cleaned out of our backyard. So, I, I started asking people, you know, what's the story? And, and it, you know, it just, it became clear to me and everybody that I ever asked from that moment on that it really does seem to be sort of an overkill of having trucks chase each other up and down the same streets on any given day. We're very conscientious now about the environment and the use of non-renewable, you know, gas and oil. And the more people that I've talked to in the last year and a half since I've been in office, the more people say, of course, it's a no-brainer. We should, we're not, we're not paying, we're not asking to have our trash picked up for free, we're asking for a one-to-one swap. And when we sat down with our GIS people and mapped out our districts of, it's pretty much of a checkerboard of, you know, that there are streets and neighborhoods where it's obvious that PSD picks up a lot more cans than the city and vice versa. So, what we did the other day in a small group, you have to crawl before you walk. We sat down with, with Mr. Desmond and Mark, I'm sorry, I don't remember his last name, the Assistant Route Supervisor. And we looked at two maps that we put forward that were representative of the way that the neighborhoods are imbalanced between more brown cans on one neighborhood and more green cans in another. And we agreed that those could be good trial-run neighborhoods. So, we're proposing that we have two neighborhoods, it's about 60 cans, we would swap them, one-to-one. So, there would be no extra money charged to either service provider, it would just be an efficient use of resources. And I think it would make our citizens proud that we're joining together in something that's cooperative as we're trying to do with our stormwater, our policing, our fire, you know, we're all one island, and I would appreciate that. Thank you.
Katie Devine?
Hi, I'm Eddie Devan, I live in 21 Hampshire, that's in White House Plantation. And I, like some of these other folks, came to the meeting when this project of developing the Dills Bluff property was put to rest, I thought, so we're back. Because that butts up to my backyard, and I'm the one don't worry, wake up at five o'clock in the morning with trucks clanking and clanking in and out of that property. If you wanna put the offices back there, okay, fine, clear out some of those evergreen trees and I'll be happy because it cuts down my sunlight in the winter time. But as for trucks going in and out of there, uh-uh. So, please don't do that. And I know everybody on my street feels the same way.
How is it, Chris?
I'm sorry?
Yes.
I came in late, I'm sorry.
Can we add some of the White House people, how many houses are in that neighborhood? Three hundred?
First of all, good evening. Glad to see all the regular officials here once more again doing their job. It's not always an easy thing to be an official, to make decisions, but one of the things I'd just like to mention is that the city, trash pickup, I don't think it's a good idea. Of course, most people that live in the city will tell you, especially in the peninsula, their trash will pick up late, nine, 10 o'clock at night. So, I don't know if you're aware of that, but their trash will all pick up late at night. So, you're not there on the island, I know people that live in the city, and their trash will pick up late at night, so your trash can will be there the next day. The other thing is too, PSD and the town are two different entities. I think everybody knows that. So, trying to cross this thing about trash pickup, it's really not gonna work, and it's not gonna be fair to me as a taxpayer of James Island. It's just not gonna work, because there's too much interchanging, too much paperwork, trying to get the money out of the cities like polity. So, that's, it's just not gonna work. And the other thing is too, is that, I mentioned it before, but the town, they took our locals' sales tax money. They did what they were willing, and they did not discuss. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Miss White, anybody else?
That's it. Commissioner Loughlin, do you mind if I look outside and see if there's people that either can't hear or had a speaker brought in? So, that way, because I've been out there before too, so if they wanna know what's going on, I'd like them to have the opportunity. Nobody? Thank you.
Okay, um, that's our monitor consent agenda now. We have been doing this individually, approving the minutes. Starting getting to busy times where we're doing two or three different committees during the month, so I'm changing it to consent agendas where we can do a vote for all the committees at one time, like we did last month. And then, any corrections will be done by exception rather than by animizing them out. So, do I hear approval for the consent agenda? Any changes in the regular commission meeting minutes of last month? So, for a second? Senator Mr. Poston, all in favor? All right, do you think we need to do a roll call? Oh, discussion, any discussion?
Commissioner Brown Crouch?
Yes.
Commissioner Clifford?
Yes.
Commissioner Engelmann?
Yes.
Commissioner Loughlin?
Yes.
Commissioner Platt?
No.
Commissioner Poston?
Yes.
Commissioner Woolsey?
Yes.
Motion to 61.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is Miss White with Mayor Corvus.
Thanks, sir. Numbers are definitely on the target for one month. Anyway, there are two items that I wanted to bring up that Mr. Dan, Dan, as you all are aware, we have put in a new accounting software, which also added a lot of features to the ability to pay our utility bills for the residents. A lot easier way to do it, you can do it online, multiple other ways. But there's been a long process in this, and I think we've done extremely well, and I'd like James to tell them where we are and what we've done.
Alright, we had the software folks come in for about four weeks, they were on site, doing hands-on training, installing, doing the conversion. There were many nights we spent there until eight, nine o'clock, doing these conversions, going over. I heard a lot of chatter about glitches, and there were, there were no glitches in our billing system, or our general ledger, everything transferred over perfectly fine. I did bring some slides to show you a couple things, I don't know if it's the essence of time, if you guys wanna look at them, I can certainly send them to you. There's a lot of reporting out of PSNA, there's a lot of good stuff that we did not have the capability prior to this. So, it's a really good system.
Is anybody interested in slides?
We are sure.
It's only about 10, 12 slides.
Now, is this system supposed to reduce staff time working on the billing? Is that what I?
It won't reduce staff time, it makes it more efficient, it doesn't reduce staff from doing what they're doing. Now, you just gotta do different jobs. No, we're not hand putting anything in it. Everything imports automatically, from our bank and from our third-party vendor that's taking the application, which we'll see here in a second.
Seems like to me it saves staff time.
Yes, I would like to ask if you would also email these things to us?
Sure, okay, sure.
This is on?
Um, I called Mr. Wise and didn't return my call, but we didn't talk. I got your online statement, which for my card bill, it shows, it was due 10 days before it was due on the bill. So, why was that?
The vendor at that time could not only, could only put one date, so we told him to put the earlier date of 8/19, because if we put the 8/29 normal due date, the people who were late wouldn't have got that notification. So, it was their, our part to say that, we've since fixed that, and there'll be two dates moving forward. But that was a choice we made.
The last thing you said, it'd be two what?
It'll be two dates, somebody who's late from the prior month, which is about the middle of the month, and somebody who's normally paid, like yourself, would be the last working day of the month. We have repaired that on the vendor site, you'll see two dates now.
Wasn't due on the 19th?
No, no. So, I think everybody got an email or a text who was signed up at that point. Yeah, I think that's what happened, is that what you got, an email? Okay.
I might call you back.
And your date, your date on your bill was correct. Yeah, you skipped this one, this was for Alan, if you need that, that's a slide. You go to the next one, please. PSNA software on that first one, if you go back one. Thank you, that's our software company that we went with, and we showed this during our CIP presentation back in March. Those are the, go ahead. Lights, she's talking about the lights. Those were the software utilities that we bought, utility billing, general ledger, budgeting. That's seven of 32 that they offer, so there's more capability for us down, down the road, excuse me, down the road. If you skip to the next one, please. These are some of the marketing things that the company gave us, that Joanne worked hard on getting out. The newsletter went out early, the coming soon went out a month before, our envelope had go paperless on it. Once we heard, there was some controversy out there about how the site worked, we put out that letter on the bottom left corner. If you skip to the next slide, please. We sent out business cards, we got them in our lobby, in the little top left corner. We've got a billboard in our lobby and out by the road, which is the right side. And on our website and social media, we have the young lady on the phone there that says, click here, you can pay your bill. So, our social media and our notifications were sent out a month and a half before, and they'll be continued to be sent out. So, we wanted to eliminate those issues that people had trying to log in for the first time. The biggest issue they had, if you go to the next slide, please. Oops, sorry, I slid this one in. This is some of the software reporting we can now have that we never had, by card, how they paid, by volume, by day. You can see the trends, it gives us all these charts, we've never had any of that information before. This is information on fingertips so we can relate to Robert, any department or the commission. If you go to the next one, please. This is what the website looks like, anything green on that website, our software, you can click on. So, we can click on location ID, account number, name, you can see work orders, you can see comments. It's very user-friendly, and you see the bar, it looks just like a typical Windows application now, as opposed to the old DALL Space we had. If you go to the next one, please. Your bill now has on the bottom left corner a scan bar on it. The customer service ladies up front can actually scan your bill when you walk in, and it pulls up and populates their information, and all they have to do is accept payment. It's a lot quicker for focus there where they're typing all that information in. Next one, please. This is where you go to pay your bill. The biggest problem we had is people had saved their bookmark from the old website. So, when you went to pay your James Island PSD bill, they went to their bookmark, typically like we all do, went to James Island PSD, and it was the wrong site. So, our letter initially said, in our follow-up letter, said you gotta clear that and put this new website in. You can choose to register or pay a one-time bill. If you go to the next one, please. I pulled up a copy of a bill there. Once you go in, you have to put your customer name, and you can pass this along to your constituents, exactly how it is on your bill. So, I pulled up my father's bill there, John G. Gaines, no periods, all caps, it has to be exactly like it is on the bill. That was one of the issues people were having. The account numbers on your bill there, you see in the top left corner, full of blue box, and then you put in that. And then you put in that service, that secure code that they generate. If you go to the next one, please. If you, once you go through that site, you can see anything from August 1st moving forward on that site. Anything from August 1st, 2019 moving back to 2015, you have to go to this historic billing site. And if you click on BSNA Online, and that's why it says that there, go ahead to the next slide, please. It takes you to this site. You can enter by address, name, right at the top corner. If you just put in 1062, that's your house address, go to the next slide, next slide, please. It pulls up anything with 1062 in it. You see the drop list there on the left, on the right, excuse me. You find your account number, which again I put over in the left corners on your bill. Go to the next slide, please. And then you simply put in your, is it called website pin there? Which is also on your bill now, there's a website pin. And it will take you to your history, you can see four or five years of all your bills there and every payment you made. So that was a little confusion, but it's all on that one website to get to either site. If you go to the next slide, please. The other big controversy we heard was bills are now broken down by charges and fees for transparency. Before it was one lump sum on your bill. So if you had a late charge, if you had a disconnect fee, if you had 1705, which are a base rate, and your usage, it was all in one number, including any past due. Now our bill with the new software can break all those down. That was one of the questions they had, they saw 1705, thought it was a new charge. It's always been a charge and it's always been there. There were no new charges on these bills. If you go to the next one, please. This was an example in the letter, I just tried to highlight what ties together and I'll send these to you. How our bills are calculated, by usage, by the base rate of 1705. If you go to the next one, that's our total of 87.33. I think a lot of people put on social media that our old streak was 87.33. And that is June, July, and August, that's the trend we see, that most people max out. That's our max bill that you can have if you're a residential customer. And that's calculated, including the 1705, so your usage is $70.28. You certainly are using a lot more than 14 CCFs if you're maxing out, if you're filling a pool or whatever the reason is. So you're actually, 14 CCFs is what we're charging for, which you may be using 18, 19, 20. So there is, there is an advantage there of us capping it out. If you go to the next slide, please. And then I had any questions? I know I went through that fast, but I know the essence of time, what y'all got on the agenda. I'll certainly send it to you and you can share it with your constituents wherever asked. And Sandra, Sandra, Stephanie, and Joanne will be glad to answer any questions as long as myself or Robert, anybody has.
I have one last request of Mr. Dean. He put together a new dollar report, kind of where we are, expenditure, revenues and so forth. And that's included in the conference right now, so. Just wanted to note that out, so I'm sure you all saw it when you got here.
My guys.
Yes, ma'am, let's do it.
I saw it and I really appreciate you doing it, but would you please in the next, would you make sure the font is large?
Sure, sure. Sure, sure, absolutely. And again, that report's right out, there's a lot of reporting that we've never had, if we've got to send that out and manipulate this, it comes straight off.
Good job, just make it larger.
Sure, absolutely, no problem. Any other questions?
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Any questions for Mr. Wise? Everybody's going to love this next. I move that we go into executive session, we have three issues that we need to talk about and receive legal advice on. One is on the cost-sharing agreement, one is for a former process, and the third one is on personal action. Do I have a second? Any discussion?
Commissioner Brown Crouch?
Yes.
Commissioner Clifford?
Yes.
Commissioner Engelman?
Yes.
Commissioner Loughlin?
Yes.
Commissioner Platt?
No.
Commissioner Olson?
Yes.
Commissioner Woolsey?
Yes.
Motion carries, five to two.
Although it's in favor also, which I do so, sort of annoyed concern and it's like a, you know, they say it, analogy during apples form. I think about how the legislature so many years ago pushed into approving a scanner is very impolite to let the customers pay in advance and again, it's kind of direct comparison, but I think I'm just, just a concern that you might regret it, except that I'll vote for it.
Well, I'm going to piggyback on that. I think since this was all weighed out and mapped out in 1961, I don't think we should be making any changes to it now without going back to the House or Senate and saying, here's what we want to do, do you agree? Because I can almost tell you where it's going to be in the next year. It's going to be going back to them and they say, it's fine, or no, it wasn't fine. And I don't think, you know, we have enough money to run our business on. I don't think this is going to make tremendous difference in our business.
Any other discussion? Ms. White, would you call a roll? This is on number nine, motion to approve ordinance on cost sharing with the town of James Island.
What made the motion?
I know.
I know, it made it Kathy's second, is that correct?
Commissioner Brown Crouch?
Yes.
Commissioner Clifford?
Yes.
Commissioner Engelman?
No.
Commissioner Loughlin?
I'll hold off.
Commissioner Platt?
All right.
Commissioner Olson?
Yes.
Commissioner Woolsey?
Yes.
Commissioner Loughlin?
No, I still have some problems, no.
Motion carries, five to two.
Okay, because number nine, the motion to approve the ordinance passed, the motion to approve the memorandum, which is what we use to generate, the ordinance is moot. So that is coming off of the agenda. We don't need to take action on it.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to remove number 10 on agenda and postpone it to the next meeting. I believe I asked for it.
Anybody have a problem with that?
No.
Are they fine with that?
Upon our September meeting. Next is motion to approve resolution approving finance terms for vehicles and equipment. And we have a handout for that. Do I hear a motion?
No.
He can have it.
Any discussion?
I think Ms. White was waiting for y'all to make the decision on removing item number 10 from the agenda before we advance forward to approve the motion for the vehicle. Just defer, just kind of defer to the next one.
It was deferred, yes. So discussion. I don't think she heard you, that's all.
Discussion about the vehicles, the financing of the vehicles. We have a motion, we have a second. Is there any discussion?
Does anybody have anything to say about?
Hearing no discussion, Ms. White, would you call a roll for a vote?
Commissioner Brown Crouch?
Yes.
Commissioner Clifford?
Yes.
Commissioner Engelman?
Yes.
Commissioner Loughlin?
Yes.
Commissioner Platt?
Aye.
Commissioner Olson?
Yes.
Commissioner Woolsey?
Yes.
Motion carries, unanimous.
Number 12, motion to approve petition to Charleston County from the commission. Do I hear a motion?
Second.
Any discussion?
None.
Discussion, of course I'll vote for it, but it doesn't seem like it should be necessary.
It's a county requirement. Or a state requirement.
It's a county requirement.
Yeah, and such a big requirement, I'm not saying that. Staff are thinking, I'm thinking there's a requirement from the county or open state. No one, you've given the probate to approve our own budget, I don't know, a decade ago, that should suffice. But I guess it doesn't, so go ahead with it.
This has to do with percentages and all kinds of other money things, but it's a county requirement. Call a roll, please.
Commissioner Brown Crouch?
Yes.
Commissioner Clifford?
Yes.
Commissioner Engelman?
Yes.
Commissioner Loughlin?
Yes.
Commissioner Platt?
Aye.
Commissioner Olson?
Yes.
Commissioner Woolsey?
No.
Motion carries, six to one.
Okay. Committee and liaison reports. Ms. White, you have an interesting.
The administrative committee met this morning at 10 o'clock, which is a bad call, went for it, scheduled that time and I promised that I'd do it again. But we did need, there was a forum and it directed from your sources, the documents with two applications that had been received and indicated that a third one was in the mail. And it sounded like it was effective free delivery today, but I don't know, Ms. White, was it delivered?
No, I don't believe it made the mail run today.
I see. So as of today, apparently there were two applications. And I think it would set a, some discussion about retaining the debt interest firm and, and decided we had to propose commission, a decision of that.
And about the time, because the United States Post Office being what it is, sometimes you don't get things in a timely manner. And with this, with this advertisement for this position, with it going out of the state of South Carolina even, to try to give it till this coming Friday, I do believe, or like a five-day extension to make sure that people have the opportunity to provide their resumes and applications in the specified vehicle, which will be the United States Post Office, not a, not anything else. But that doesn't mean they're not considered, but that's what else was specified by somebody, so.
Wasn't that also based on the date, it was the 23rd?
That was supposed to be postmarked, postmarked by the 23rd, but we're allocating five more days because the mail is not what it used to be and there's days that I don't get stuff at all, but I know what's coming.
Yeah, just clarification.
So the postmark date is soft.
About the 23rd.
Correct.
If it isn't, when received, the 28th, we would have moved forward.
Do we add, or delivered by hand?
I was going to say, why don't you have a courier bring it and drop it on your doorstep? If you're not there, I mean, it's really not stuff that somebody goes, oh, I'm not supposed to see this.
No, somebody could, we had one applicant that handed delivered it to the office.
It's academic, it's already past the closing gate. We need to move on.
But you're paying seven something, $7.30 times seven to deliver something that one person could do in an hour.
That's already getting paid.
It's, the closing date has already been, which you said, August the 23rd. It doesn't matter how it would have gotten to it, it had to be postmarked by the 23rd.
But don't we, aren't we keeping it open until Phil?
No.
I thought we told.
It's closed, it's closed, we're waiting for the post office to give them a little bit of breathing time. But the 23rd was the closing date for it, it's just like a contract, has a closing date on it.
Well, Commission Chair, kind of like when we got into the situation with the RFQ, if by Friday we allocate those five extra days for the postman, if we don't have a substantial pool, then we will, committee chair reconvene and then perhaps extend the deadline or come up with some ulterior way, alternative, alternative way.
Yes.
To get that, to get a pool.
And if there's a subsequent meeting, it would be held at a juncture with the regular meeting.
Thanks.
Okay, next on the agenda is liaison report with the town of James Island, you all got it. And I'll have a one-page report. We talked about the cost-sharing agreement, national night out, a new item, which is the James Island Creek pollution. And there are going to be some requirements coming down the pipe on that. We talked about the new marketing program and administrative position. And we got a, thank you very much from the town, the fire department and Solid Waste came and helped from moving a tree out of the road on that. So, anybody have anything else that I need to address on that?
What does this stand, N O stand?
With what?
Oh, this is the.
National night out.
Okay. I wish we spelled things out.
I hope it says the fire department and Solid Waste.
Yes.
Worked together and getting it cleared. So we have to thank you for the town, both departments.
You're the brown hand up.
Yes, ma'am.
I'd like to mention, I was at a function a couple of weeks ago and I spoke with the chief from North Charleston by the foreman, who gave Chief Sebo and his men one of the highest praises that could be received. So I'd like for Chief Sebo to stand up and to let him know that
Appreciate that.
the chief from North Charleston thinks that you are just awesome.
Thank you, I appreciate it. Next on the agenda is Solid Waste community report, Mr. President.
Well, as you know, due to the discussion at 6:30 that we had, we met with Kathy and I and of course Commissioner Clifford was an angle to come to support her work. But we met with Mr. Desmond as well as the city and their heads of solid waste collection and went over proposal of, you know, doing a kind of like test run through the neighborhoods, making sure, you know, choosing which ones. And they had a plan and then, you know, so we were able to then, we were able to discuss what we think we need to do to move forward and see if we can get the ball rolling and if it will benefit the island and, you know, people in the town, unincorporated and in the city, you know, and if all the people who are actually employed and are, you know, doing this work, if they are the ones who are also going to be okay with this. So, you know, we're going to keep discussing this as we discussed at the 6:30, like moving forward with some, some changes and especially to the date, which we would say instead of October 1st, January 1st is when we will try to start. So that is the topic.
That was true, yeah. I, I think something like that should come before full commission and, and so that's, is the committee, it's always pretty, not pretending it as a, a motion or to, to the full commission.
We will, after we get some more course, it would be for the full cushion because your input is as valuable as ours.
So we're not moving forward with the agreement until, at that.
Yes, we have to, we have to discuss it a little further and have some, some feedback from Walter. A couple of things, you know, as discussed at the 6:30 meeting, just making sure that what we are going to then propose, that's something that, that we will get and then have for next once meeting for all of us to, when we have a discussion.
Well, I would just like to request that one of the things that has a pain in the share of the full commission is why the city of Charleston wants to have the contract, new PSD, to do the whole island? I, I haven't heard a cogent reason why they want to do that.
They thought the price was too high. The, the price we offered was too high, they said they could get a product all of the less. That's what they told me.
And again, this is why, as she said, inaccuracy from Mr. Wise, as you mentioned. That's why, as Mr. Desmond was saying, we need to maybe, you know,
Research it.
get a little more of our perspective and
And the consideration.
get it all to them, so I guess.
Imagine at some point in next month or so, we might even have an MOU about it, and then you could vote on it.
Then it can go over.
Yes, absolutely, that's why, again, that's why he said, we will have it for full commission to discuss and to move on.
And, and again, extreme news, but this, this, for that, fair Riley, you come, but his legacy, he still waited down, being legacy, I mean, you know, for me, you need just to go down to, even at highway, you know, put up all internal, and, oh my goodness.
Tell me.
One song with the other.
Mr. Chair, can we put something real quick out there? It is almost nine-thirty, we have one, two, three, four more rounds to go through. Two of them's gonna be lengthy. I'm gonna go back to Chip's thing. The agenda is extremely long. The discussion creates a negative attitude, even from me, prolongs the meeting. I move that we put these next three items on the next agenda. This is gonna be a long discussion.
I'll probably amend that, I'm trying to remember, have we got like having two recordings tonight?
We've been doing that, Eugene.
Yeah, typically in a regular meeting.
Well, I know that, I know that, so we're gonna have the, number ten deferred, we're gonna have number fourteen, fifteen, sixteen deferred, and we're gonna have new business that we'll be bringing up, so we're gonna be back in the same situation next month that we're in right now.
Not well, but I would add one more thing. We have the two kinds of speaking oral comments. I think we oughta go back to one. I really did. You know, give it all out, give them more than three minutes, five minutes in the beginning, when we need to move to one comment.
So, we need to change our rule procedure.
Let's get that on your agenda.
We need to change our rule procedure.
Well, put that on the next agenda, and Mr. Boyton.
Can I have, give me the motion, I second that.
Just wondering, can I pass out this very nice letter from Kenya, is a charity address, I was gonna do that correspondence, it's a very nice letter.
Is that the card from her?
Yes.
Yeah, I would, I would like to see.
I just wanted to make sure you got the CDs, they just came today.
But we have a motion.
Is there an actual shot of the writing comment here?
I'm sorry.
There's an actual motion on the floor, and it's not being piggybacked up, it's just kind of tongue-in-cheek comment, or is it?
No, I, I, I'm sorry to say.
Whenever she made the motion to skip.
Right, but before that, you had made mention of going back to meetings.
I'm just checking, I wanna make sure it's just tongue-in-cheek, I can take a joke and I play.
It was a good French question.
Oh, I know where I'm voting on.
But I think we oughta go to one comment, and give them more than, give them five minutes.
All right, we have a motion in a second.
We have, we have two motions in a second. We have, in addition to the agenda for next one, we have discussion about whether we're gonna first, I'm like, you know, for the next one. Who wants to run the meeting?
Well, apparently we all are doing it.
Obviously.
Obviously.
You've come up before.
He thinks it's, all right, I'm gonna give you one motion originally, to make a second, that we put fourteen, fifteen on the next agenda, because that's not that much, I mean, we're sitting out here with seventeen things on our agenda today, and I make the motion, somebody please second it, and we'll vote on that, ten.
Um, you want to add number ten, since that was deferred?
Ten, fourteen, fifteen, and sixteen.
Oh, yeah, and ten.
Ten.
Well, sixteen.
Fourteen, fifteen.
Ten, fourteen, fifteen, and sixteen.
That's what you mentioned.
We've already discussed it to death, so please call it up.
The motion on the floor is to defer item number ten, fourteen, fifteen, and sixteen to the next regular meeting.
I think we already had sixteen, Mr. Wise.
No, we're keeping sixteen.
Right.
He's passing it.
Well, yeah, the handout was handed out.
Yes, and the list that was made before that was handed out was by Loughlin, and it included sixteen.
Mr. Wise, can I get your copy of your letter?
Oh, I thought I didn't know it was in that way.
All right, will you call the roll?
Commissioner Brown Crouch?
Hold on, we're gonna have discussion. Motion second. Now, I think he wants to talk about it, Mr. White.
Well, I just was gonna mention that correspondence has happened being deferred, so I just wanted to thank David Hoffman and his staff. Could you step up here and just read the names out real quick, because this is a very personal, direct note from, you all knew about the force man Greg and Harvard, you?
I was there.
Of course, we know.
Taking pictures.
So, were we cleaning it up with the city?
Mr. Butt doesn't have one.
Special things go out to Jeff Cohen, Chris Pereira, Kevin, Levon, Connie Lafayette, and Tim LePierre for their valuable assistance in coordinating valve shut-off of pump station operations.
And that's beyond call, didn't it?
Yes.
Without their tireless efforts and the efforts of many others, within your staff, our completion of this repair would have been next to impossible. I think that's kind of important.
I did too. Thank you, sir.
Well, I also, I also.
Congratulations, gentlemen. Good job.
I have my little hand up. I think that since these guys have done such an outstanding job, I think this should go into their personal recognition, have special recognition.
It's already there.
Well, I didn't know about it, so I'm just imagining, I think that this should be acknowledged.
Okay, now, Chip, can we vote?
Any further discussion?
Anybody discuss it on the chip, Josh?
Oh, you want me to do something? Oh, that's nice.
Commissioner Brown Crouch?
Yes.
Commissioner Clifford?
No.
Commissioner Engelman?
Yes.
Commissioner Loughlin?
No.
Commissioner Platt?
Aye.
Commissioner Folsen?
Yes.
Commissioner Woolsey?
No.
Motion carries, four to three.
That's a close call.
I make a motion, may adjourn.
Well, we got the oral comments to go.
That's right, excuse my, what happened to the six? July nineteenth, man. Chip, what did we do to the motion for that?
That's right.
About the oral comments.
No, it was all James's presentation.
Yeah, I mean, it wasn't an agenda item to change the policy procedure, so you gotta keep it for the night.
Do we have anybody?
Yes.
Do you have any comments?
Yes.
Julie Herschel? Herschel?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to thank you guys for taking public comment and having a note of concern for us to come and discuss. I'm a resident from the Preserve at Dulles Bluff. I live directly across from the street from where you're proposing to build on your own property. I've talked to some of your staff and understand the issues that they have with the housing that they're currently in here. Flooding is a major problem that, you know, all of us deal with, and I appreciate that, and for the hard work that they do, I would like to see them in a place deserving of how hard they work. That said, I am very strongly pro- opposed to anything industrial moving into the area across the street from where I live. I just bought my house, it's my first house, the houses there are in the five hundreds. Putting it in industrial space across the street will diminish the cost of our homes, and a lot of us are very young professionals that are just getting started in our careers that live in that particular neighborhood as well. I really don't want to wait up to the noises and the sounds of the industrial facility near my home. With all of that said, I am not opposed to you building up that property as offices for your individuals, potentially, as long as they're kept a nice aesthetic, kept some of the trees. As someone said earlier, I'm not such a fan of pine trees, so go ahead and mix those puppies. But I understand the need for that space and the need to treat your employees well, and I really do appreciate that. I would offer the suggestion of using some of that commercialized space and maybe getting it rezoned for more commercial, and actually get some businesses in there that might make you some additional money, if that's a possibility. I think in the environment that we're currently in, all of us are looking for a way to cost-savvy to grow our businesses. We're looking for ways to improve how we spend our money, and, you know, it's going to be very difficult to get people to agree to tax increases and things like that, even though we may need them. And so, showing us that you're good stewards of our time, which honestly, I kind of feel a little bit shafted that we're not discussing, given the fact that, you know, I've stayed here the entire meeting as well. I'm a mother of two, so it makes it hard sometimes to find the time to come out to these types of events. But I do appreciate your time and everything that you've done for us, and I appreciate you giving media opportunities. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Jackie, can I? Anyone? My name's Jackie, I live at the Preserve at Dulles Bluff, as well across from the area that you're, that you all in it are considering a new facility. Like Julie, we really didn't know about, like, what was going on up until Meredith posted something on Nextdoor, and so we wanted to come in and hear a little bit more about what was going on. Again, I am a little disappointed I wasn't able to hear more of the discussion or the conversation regarding and having it pushed to an, of a meeting down, down the way, but I, I don't know enough about what's going on to be able to be completely against or completely for, other than the fact that I, I mean, I have a family of five, I have four kids, myself, my husband, we, we're new to the neighborhood, James Island, have only been here for three years, and it's a huge investment for us, and hoping that the property value increases and doesn't decrease. But I'll tell you, it's gonna be a hard sell to, in the future, for work, my husband is to move the family, that I'm not sure we're gonna be able to find somebody to purchase our home for the price point that it's at currently, even with increase in the, in the values on James Island, if there is a James Island PTSD across the street from your home. Again, like, we are very appreciative of the services provided. In the two years that I've lived on James Island, I have not had one complaint for the trash pickup, we, our taxes, we were willing to pay additional, but, I mean, I've worked, I worked at the bowling company for twelve years in the, the set side as well as commercial, and we had to use a little of what we had to make things work. Now, looking at the flooding and the situation, like, my no means is it look like it's working, so I absolutely appreciate that alternatives are being sought out. I hate to sound like, well, not in my backyard, I'm not saying that. I mean, I'd love to see, I would, I would, I would love to see something happen, either make it into a park, or help beautify what our town center is, what you want it to, like, maybe you can't station it on the land, or maybe they should, you can lease out, whatever the business, the business plan would look best, and only at this point, I don't have enough information to give ideas, nor would I attempt, because you've been doing this for some time. But, again, I appreciate everything you guys have done, maybe there's more opportunity to look for other options. Thank you.
Any questions?
So, you make the motion, you adjourn. Marlon can I have it?
Any questions?
Commissioner Brown Crouch?
What, oh, yes.
Commissioner Clifford? Commissioner Clifford?
Nah, just no.
Commissioner Engelman?
Yes.
Commissioner Loughlin?
Yes.
Commissioner Platt?
Aye.
Commissioner Folsen?
Yes.
Commissioner Woolsey?
Yes.
Motion carries, six to one.